June 8, your session.
Yes.
We're on here, yeah.
Very good. All right, it is nine o'clock. Let's call this regular meeting of Marion County Board Supervisors to order. Vote call, Mr. Agen.
Keesha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
All right, any communications received? Jake?
Not directly, no, sir.
All right. Board? Done. Very good. Public comments is the portion where public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future board supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Please, anything?
No.
Anything? And nothing from the folks in the room? Very good, we'll move on. All right, I entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good, on to business. First, we have a legislative update from Kelly Myers, Marion County's lobbyist and firm. Kelly is Skinner and Pashke. Did I say it right?
Right, yep.
Very good, thank you. We appreciate all the work you've done. And I asked Kelly to come and give us an update on the session, highlights, impacts to Marion County, and we'll go from there. Kelly, floor is yours.
Thank you, thanks for having me today. Thought I'd just try to tackle this by subject matter. I personally remember issues versus all the different bill numbers, which can just be, you know, swirling in my head. So I thought I'd start with broadband. Broadband is an issue that I've heard is an issue for Marion County. It's also an issue throughout the state of Iowa. The governor addressed broadband deserts in her condition of the state address early on in session. She addresses the legislature, I believe it's the second day of the legislative session. And her priority for this year, she opened session with a $450 million ask to expand broadband throughout the state. In the end, $100 million was appropriated to this goal with the understanding that federal monies may supplement this appropriation. Additional work on broadband included House File 848, which expanded the broadband grant program that is administered within the information technology department. And this is to, again, address broadband deserts throughout the state. The legislature is very aware that as COVID hit, people needed to work from home. Also, to just, you know, be able to have folks in rural Iowa be able to work from home, this is very much an issue that needs to be addressed. This year in the House, they also established an information technology committee to address issues such as broadband. Childcare is another issue that we heard a lot about. We got an update from Carla on that with the data and the survey for Marion County. The House passed three, or maybe even four, different childcare bills this year. It was very much a goal of the House to address childcare issues. Ultimately, the language that passed was put into the omnibus tax bill. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Division two of that bill eliminates the child independent care tax credit cliff. That raises the maximum net income from $45,000 to $90,000 so that there would not be that, essentially like cliff and not be able to get that credit. Also in the omnibus tax bill addressing childcare, it's a little something about high-quality jobs. And it amended the eligibility requirements under the high-quality jobs program to allow the economic development authority to consider whether a proposed project would provide a licensed daycare facility for the use by the business's employees. So that's to give a little more motivation for businesses to address the childcare needs of their employees. One of the bills that we hopped on to help pass this year was the county treasurer bill, House File 870. This bill would allow county treasurers to issue initial registration and titles for vehicles. And this would address the backlog that we've seen in some bigger counties. The bill also amended fees, increasing most fees by $5, which would, had, it's my understanding, have not been raised since the 1980s. I am told that the bill struggled to get started. It came out late. And then when it was published, it was published with the wrong language, I think, or language that was discussed last year. That was some of, created some confusion and delay, frankly. Then once the bill started to roll along and it got to, it had moved out of subcommittee and it moved to committee, and then it went to what they call the larger caucus discussion where all of the, this was in the House, where all 59 Republicans would address it. I'm told that the fee increase caused some hesitation at that point. And so it was then transferred over to the Ways and Means Committee. The Ways and Means Committee is the committee that addresses fees and taxes and revenue in the state. And so because this is the first year of a two-year general assembly, that bill should remain alive and can be addressed next year. Taxes, as one of the goals of Marion County is to address the tax issue. We want to make Iowa and particularly Marion County attractive for folks to move here, to stay here. We monitor closely to tax bills. There was many different tax ideas proposed this year. But ultimately, what ended up passing was rolled up into an omnibus bill, which was seven, 27 different divisions. That bill popped in the last six days of session. Like I said, many of those, if those items within the bill we had seen previously, they had been all rolled up into the one bill. And this is the bill that caused delay, if you will, in us adjourning on time. The legislature was set to adjourn April 30th. It did not end up adjourning until May 19th, essentially because the House and the Senate had different priorities on what it wanted to do with taxation and issues. The Senate passed its tax bill pretty early on, sent it over to the House, and it just, that how, that just didn't get any traction in the House. And so us that were watching were kind of confused, like, how are they going to come together on this? Because they didn't end up moving any of their appropriations bills until they got the tax issue settled. Their appropriations bills, they happen at the end of session. So for the first part of session, we do policy work, all kinds of, you know, nothing that, all kinds of things that don't include the state appropriating money. At the very end of session is when the, they have already had their revenue estimating committee come back and march and tells them what they believe their targets are going to be. And then what happens is the House and the Senate leadership, they develop what their targets to give to their appropriations chairs. It trickles on down then to the subcommittee members, and they're told what they are allowed to spend for each appropriations bill. And so that's how that works. And that's why we don't start getting busy on appropriations until mid to late March, because that's, they're waiting for the REC to know what they can spend. And as you know, in Iowa, we can't spend over, we have a constitutional requirement to spend, I believe it's like 96% of our revenues. So we can't be like the federal government and spend more than we bring in. So that's why we, we wait until the end of session to address many issues. So this year's tax bill, like I said, had 27 different divisions. Broadband and childcare, I've already talked about. It also eliminated the income tax triggers that were negotiated and put into law in 2018. And so beginning in the tax year of 2023, Iowa will go from nine to four individual income tax brackets, with the top rate collapsing from 8.52% to six, six and a half percent. It also eliminated individual federal deductibility. Federal taxable income becomes the starting point now in Iowa for income taxes. And the 100% of the qualified business income deduction, which is Chapter 199A of the code, is now available for qualifying businesses. Another thing that was a priority, we saw this come out of the Senate early on, was the elimination and phase out of the inheritance tax. So now that will be phased out over the next four or five years, reducing it 20% each year until it's eliminated. Iowa now will fully couple with a federal bonus depreciation. And that's Chapter 168K of the code. Another issue important to Marion County is mental health. The state, believe it or not, in this tax omnibus bill, they address mental health. One of the governor's priorities this year was for the state to take over the funding of mental health, so that local governments did not, no longer fund it, but the state would fund it, the state's general fund. Iowa, it was either the last or one of the only states that currently have local governments funding mental health. And we know what a mental health crisis there is. So the bill has it, so the state takes over funding mental health from the general fund, and this is going to be phased in over the next two years. This would impact the county mental health levy. County mental health levies would be reduced to 2114 per capita for FY22, and then be reduced to zero in FY23. Proponents of the bill stated that this would be $100 million in savings to property tax payers. Excuse me. Regarding that mental health levy, it requires all county fund balances be pooled by the Mental Health and Disability Services regions. Regional fund balances are limited to 40% of the preceding. Excuse me. Get chocolate so much.
I was going to.
There you go. So the regional fund balances are limited to 40% of the preceding fiscal year's actual expenditures, so in FY22. In FY23, the fund balances are limited to 20%. And then in FY24, the fund balance is limited to 5%. It also has, implements state oversight of the mental health regions. And there will be reports to DHS and then quarterly reports to the legislature on the status of that oversight. Another thing that the tax omnibus did was eliminate the property tax backfill that was set up in 2013. It will be phased out in four or seven years, depending upon how much the tax base of the city or county grew relative to the rest of the state since 2014. School districts' backfill payments will be eliminated after FY22. Any other taxing entities besides schools, counties, and cities will be phased out over seven years. Like I said, that bill has 27 different divisions. I just took what I parceled out that I believe was most impactful to the county to report on. But that bill is Senate File 619, if any of you all love to read legislative language. One of our proactive objectives this year, and frankly, my greatest disappointment in this session, was House File 862, the Rebuild Iowa Infrastructure Fund. That's what we call the Capitol, the RIF bill. It's an appropriations bill, so it's not addressed until the end of session. The RIF bill has money flow into it from gambling proceeds, frankly. And it's supposed to be used for vertical infrastructure. And because of the VA project, one of the goals that we had hoped to work on for Marion County this year was to get Marion County access to funds in the state demolition and the state rehabilitation funds that are oversaw by the Economic Development Authority. Currently, Chapter 15, I think it's 261, says that state can access that money for buildings that need to be demoed or rehabilitated. My colleague Logan previously staffed the RIF bill. He had intricate knowledge of these two accounts and said, hey, this would be a great thing for Marion County to access for the VA project. So what we did is, we did our homework. We did our legwork. We did our due diligence. We talked to stakeholders and said, hey, is anyone going to object? As we asked for this language to be tweaked so that a county that owns a property that had been previously owned and abandoned by the federal government could access this money. It would be a narrow tweak to the bill so that, you know, we didn't want to inadvertently expand it or overbroaden it. And we still wanted to maintain the intended use of the money that was in those funds. Talked to stakeholders, no one had a problem with us doing that, was going to go to vertical infrastructure. We talked to the appropriations chairs in the Senate and the House. We talked to the RIF appropriations chairs in the Senate of the House. Mark came up to the Capitol and presented to the RIF appropriations chair, told them. We laid out the, the projects, the three alternative, or plans, if you will, for the city. And everyone was very positive about moving forward to amend the language to allow Marion County to access this money that had been set up. Three years ago, the legislature had appropriated $1 million for each fund for three years. And only one project, a project in Vinton, which, by the way, was very similar to what Knoxville was doing. It was a state hospital that had been the school for the blind, which Knox, or Knoxville's VA originated as School for the Blind. They were implementing, I can't remember if it was a 20 or $40 million project, to rehabilitate those buildings up in that community. They had applied for and received money, I believe, in the first year of that appropriation. So they were awarded the $2 million. The second year, it's my understanding, no one applied for the money, and so it just got absorbed. And there was a third year of the money, which would have been this year. And besides Vinton, there was no other projects that anybody told me about that had any plans. So to my knowledge, there was no other project out there in competition for this money besides maybe the Vinton project. But again, no one had ever indicated to myself or Logan that there was any stakeholders that were in opposition. So no one was lobbying against us on this, I mean, bottom line. We had, when we talked to the appropriations chair in the House, he was very supportive. In fact, the rehabilitation and demolition account funds were his idea so that it would address an application project for these kind of things when they come up. There wouldn't just be a RIF ask, it would, there would be a process, an application through the Economic Development Authority to actually do some of these things. And our feedback from him was, yes, this sounds in line with what we intended to do with those, with that money. And again, the, both RIF chairs were very supportive of it. So we thought we were good to go. When the House RIF bill was proposed, we were disappointed to see that the language was not in the bill. But we were hopeful because the Senate bill had not been proposed. And when it was published, it was in the bill, all the language that we needed. And so we were told, told while the House was going to start the bill, the Senate would amend it and send it back, it should not be a problem. So that's what we proceeded. Ultimately, boy, ultimately it did not pass. And we were told that House leadership would not allow that to pass. We were told a number of different things from, it's not what the money was intended for, we were told that would inappropriately expand the program. We were told different things. But in the end, I think the Senate was fully supportive and was open to passing it, had no problems with it, but it was the House that stopped it. Then I went to work for the last days of session to try and get it amended into what we call the standings bill. The standings bill is the, pretty much the last bill that is passed before they, what we call signee died, adjourned for the last time. And lots of different policy things have historically gotten thrown into that bill. And you never know until they literally pass the language, they drop it, they vote on it, and they're out of town. And I worked and worked to try to get that done, but ultimately, when I talked to the Senate, they seemed open. I was very hopeful because no one ever told me no, until the end, when the language came out, and then they just didn't end up accepting it. So again, I believe it would have been put in, the Senate was open to it. If it wasn't for the House saying they would not accept it. So that's where we stand on that. They did fund, they extended the fund. So the, the last $1 million appropriation for each fund was set for this year, but then they extended the program and they put $750,000 into each fund for next year. So I guess we need to talk about whether that would be helpful in the future, how that might work, whether you would still be eligible since the demo and process has already started. But that is something that will be there next year.
Kelly, does that, does that fund grow, or is it just $1 million each year, or $750, whatever?
So it's dependent on what the legislature appropriates to it each year. So like I said, it was set to end this year, but they appropriated another $750,000 for each fund next year.
If it doesn't get used in a particular year, then it just disappeared, or what, I mean?
I don't know if they turn it back. I, I don't know how that works. I mean, I don't know if it sits there or, or what.
Nobody applied for, for this year, other than?
I don't know of any applicant.
Okay.
Because we were just trying to get the language change correct so that we could.
To make you eligible for the money.
Yeah.
Right. Because it was, it's so, what you're trying to do at Knoxville VA is so similar to what they did in Vinton. And that's where $2 million was granted to Vinton to, you know, demo and rehabilitate those buildings up there. And it just seems nonsensical that it wouldn't be made applicable to Marion County.
It was literally just changing it to add county. That was it, correct?
A very narrow language change that said, and a county who owns property previously owned by the federal government. I don't know of any other county that it would have even been made eligible. So to be told that it might inappropriately expand the program, I just have a hard time believing that. But, yeah.
When you say, Kelly, when you say House leadership nicks this, you mean Speaker of the House, right?
That's what I was told, is that the Speaker did not allow that.
Pat Grassley.
Yeah.
Where's Vinton? Honestly, that is a tough question.
So one person killed, basically.
That's the only person that I was told that had any concerns or opposition to it.
We had, so we had meeting after meeting after meeting. Kelly and Logan did tremendous work to line everybody up. We received no negative feedback.
That's why I find this very.
From virtually anybody we talked to, and one person was able to kill it.
Speaker of the House.
So, and I'll, you know, I'm not going to put words into your mouth, Kelly, but I know the, I know the story here. As for the other things that were done, expansion of broadband is great, and we know we've been talking about it here in Marion County. I have received calls from Mahaska and their group, I mean, that with mainstream here. So we know it is a very hot topic for us right now. Childcare has been an extremely critical topic. So this sounds like more people will be able to avail themselves of a tax credit relative to childcare, so that's a good thing. Tax changes are great. Love the fact that they're reducing that rate and reducing the number of brackets. We need more. Kelly and I have talked about our priorities going into the next session. One of those will include property tax reform. And that we will put together a property tax reform plan that we will, we've received a lot of comments from our, from our public on property taxes. And I have some ideas I pitched that way. Kelly, we'll refine those, present those to our board, and then see where we go from there.
And Kelly, I think you were alluding to a question you probably want to ask us. I'm in favor of trying to pursue that again for the following, following year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I think definitely we want to go after it again, if we can. The problem will be, Steve, is that most of our demo will be done. And so the out on that will be that it's for, you know, projects that haven't started yet.
Really?
We can, we can pull those eligibility requirements for the application process and take a closer look at those, and let's see if you might be eligible still. I'm hopeful. One other thing that I wanted to mention, you know, it's not only important to be, work on proactive things at the Capitol, but it's also important to have a set of eyes there to work defensively in your favor. And one bill that is worth mentioning is Senate Study Bill 1255. It was brought by the Iowa State Fair Association this year. And essentially what that bill would make any property, not just property contiguous with a fair ground, but any property owned by a fair ground, tax exempt. And so that would significantly broaden that property that would be exempt, including commercial property. I mean, that's any property. And so we declared in opposition to that bill, as did ISAC. And so I just wanted to report on that as well.
Good.
It was stopped, correct?
It did not move forward.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Kelly, anything else?
Nope, that's all I got today.
Steve, Keesha, any additional questions for Kelly or comments?
No, I do, Kelly, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you have done for Marion County.
Well, this, this is my homeland, and I'm proud to represent.
You know, it's, it's very clear to me, we, we need somebody up there to keep track of this stuff, because otherwise, we don't know what's going on.
The process alone is very difficult to understand, I won't lie. And then when the bills change from Senate to House and the numbers, and trying to keep track of it is, I mean, I remember, not this year, but last year, trying to, you know, look at all these, and it is, it's, it's, it's crazy.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, the only way we will be able to advocate specifically for our county's interests will be having a relationship with Kelly and her group. And Kelly, I really appreciate it. You've had to put up with a lot from me this past year, but you made me look nice. So that was, I told you, that was your mission. And I look forward to being able to do some more advocacy with you at the State House next year. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess I, you know, they know we're here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a big part of it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
And we will, just to kind of close this, as we think about legislative goals and objectives going into the next session, we will have a board meeting on that specific topic where we'll talk about property tax reform and have the full discussion of board of supervisors as to what those objectives are as we get ready. So Kelly, if you could kind of give me a timeline of when that would be good?
Yeah, we start talking about priorities in September, October, typically.
Okay, good. Good, very good, thank you. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to close discussion on this item.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Very good. Next, Central Iowa Regional Housing Authority. Mr. Agen, thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you. May I use this lovely new pudding?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Don't scratch it.
I was going to say, was this built by the supervisory council? It's possible.
It's very nice.
Talented he is. Thank you very much. As you're representing with the Central Iowa Regional Housing Authority, I just want to give a quick update. Kelly Myers is a pretty tough act to follow, but I, I truly did enjoy.
You're kind.
The information was nice to hear. Business as usual at Central Iowa Regional Housing Authority. We are opening back up now after being closed. I anticipate we're going to have our first in-person board meeting in the month of June. The office is reopening. It was operated virtually by telephone and so forth during that, during the time period of the pandemic. But, you know, there were no problems with that. Things seem to go, move along well throughout all of that. And, you know, again, we're just moving forward. I have the most recently completed audit of Central Iowa Regional Housing that I want to pass on to you. Other than that, you know, again, it's business as usual. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I could. I am serving again for this year as vice chair of the Board of Commissioners for Circum.
Craig, thank you for being willing to do this. From, from your perspective, the goals of the housing authority, are, are you still comfortable with the direction, with the, the support that you're getting from other agencies that relate to Central Iowa? with the support that you're getting from other agencies that relate to Central Iowa Regional Housing Authority? Are you comfortable with the way things are moving forward even after the pandemic?
Yeah, I think, I think I am, Mark. I think we have a great staff and I think we have a very efficiently operated authority that we're a part of. Again, as I told you before, Knoxville, which includes part of Pella, has their own housing authority. So it doesn't affect us as much as it does many of the other counties that are in the region. But we want to maintain that presence and always have the opportunity to, you know, change participation if that ever needs to happen in the future. But I think support is good. And again, you know, we feel things. I brought some things to you and sometimes one of the most interesting we've talked about with the portability payments, which go to other housing authorities, just because it's an aggravating situation. Virtually every month with this, the latest statistics come before the commissioners at our monthly meeting. Everybody kind of groans, but we've done what we can. We spoke to the senators or federal senators in regard to this and they basically feel the same way we do. It's just a problem that they're, they're outvoted by all the large urban areas that like the fact that we're willing to pay them, you know. We, I don't know, that area, the highest is like $2,600 and something to a, to a client in Snohomish, Washington. And the average is probably in the $1,500 range now. Now, actually, our average to, to the clients of Surha is about $400. So we could serve four people for every one of those we have to, that we're required to by the federal money. But again, it's all HUD money. They control a lot of those things we have to do. And we, we do keep the word out there that this is an area that we're concerned about, that we still feel fair to our local citizens.
Very good, thank you, Chris.
Appreciate your voice on that, Craig, I do.
Steve, Keisha, any other questions for Craig?
No, thank you for serving.
No problem. Can I give this to Jake?
Absolutely, thank you.
I know Jake loves to get that.
With that, I would entertain a motion to close discussion on this item.
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good. Next item, we have a class, a new Class C liquor license with outdoor, to include outdoor service from Countryside Wedding and Events.
So, I mean, I'll tee this off. This is a, like you said, it's a new Class C liquor license. So the process is like all other new licenses or renewals. It starts through the Alcoholic Beverages Division. Information is inputted directly through them, dram shop insurance, those types of things. And then eventually we receive word at the county level that those processes have been accomplished and then it's ready to come before the board. The one thing that is not uploaded to the, it's not required to be on the site is a copy of a deed and a premise sketch that can still be hand delivered to our office. So the applicants here for Countryside, Mr. Lambert's have provided that information. So administratively, the fee goes directly through ABD. So administratively for this new liquor license application, we believe all those steps have taken place. In the last couple of months, Alcoholic Beverages Division upgraded or changed and updated their website and their process into what's called ELAP. It's been a definite challenge for, I can't speak for them, but for counties and for applicants. It's, it's been a real challenge to try and work through these applications and renewals. I know it oftentimes takes support from the insurance companies to help assist in trying to get the dram shop to the proper application. And if you make a change or an edit, it's an amendment and then that changes the application number. It's just, it's been a real challenge. So I know these guys have had to go through that as well so that that's not unique. I know the last one we did with Wackos was the same, similar challenges to getting the application completed. But from an administrative standpoint, this application is ready to be before you. And I think you have the, the location and the normal things.
We do, no, thank you, Jake. So administratively, it's, it's complete.
Yes, sir.
We still have some pending items on this one, I believe, Bridget. We still are doing septic issues?
Yes, so Mr. Lambert, currently, there's a one-bedroom sand filter on that property. And I've been working with Mr. Lambert to get that updated to the requirements needed for his event facility. He's got his permit pulled, he's taken that out. He's got a septic design from an engineer, just has not been installed yet. So we're almost done with the process, but like I said, it's just not installed.
Okay, any ETA?
No, he has up to a year to install this according to the permit. He pulled the permit on February 25th of this year. So he has up to a year to do it, but I'm thinking he wants to open before that. So I wouldn't recommend opening until he has that system in because the current system there cannot handle what he's proposing for a wedding venue.
Okay, all right, very good. Board, any questions for Bridget on that?
Well, I guess my only question would be.
Or anybody else?
Does that preclude us from okaying the liquor license just because the septic system's not in place? He can't, or he could not open until the septic system is in place. I'm confused on why, can we okay this without the septic system or?
Well, I guess the question comes down to the purpose of the wedding venue. The liquor license supports the purpose of the wedding venue. Am I misunderstanding that?
That's how I agree with that.
That it's for large gatherings, weddings, or, I mean, in the COVID days, probably not so large gatherings. But if you approve the liquor license as a function of the property without the right septic system, how will it meet those standards from an environmental standpoint?
Mark, it's Ross from the County Attorney's Office here. Ed asked me to sit on this issue. And I'm looking at Iowa Code Section 123.30 Sub 2. And it reads that a liquor control license shall not be issued for premises which do not constitute a safe and proper place for building and which do not conform to all applicable laws, ordinances, resolutions, and health and fire regulations. So my reading of that is the board does not have discretion to approve at this point. It would need to be tabled until such time that there is a septic system up the code.
Thank you, Ross. That answers my question.
Appreciate it, very good. Shall not, sounds pretty definitive. So Jake, can we pin this application in the system until such time as these conditions are met?
I believe the effective date was the 15th of this month was the effective date for this application.
So do they have to re, reapply?
I'm not sure, Mark, if they would have to reapply or not. As a board, you can table until, I think Lambert's were on, maybe they have a timeframe of when they're, think they'll be done.
Yeah, we're on here now. Steve over at Pella Precast has our tanks built as of this week. We have our Iowa One Call finished as of yesterday. And we'll start that dig probably tomorrow. If weather holds out this week, we'll have our tanks pretty well set by probably this time next week. So I can keep up with Jake or Bridget on that as we go along. But we're in the process of that, just kind of had to wait for everybody to pin down what we needed exactly. And so that's in play, you know, and we're looking at probably less than three weeks or let's just say three weeks to have this thing ready for inspection.
Okay.
By Bridget.
Well, very good. Well, we appreciate that, Mr. Lambert, appreciate that work and collaboration with Bridget on that. So I guess work with Jake on whether the application needs to be pended or redone for.
Does it look like it's approvable to you guys if this is done? So I hate to wait another month for a EA or an A, but is it something in the midstream that we get that finished and we're okay to where you guys agree now that it's good? We just put a starting date on this?
I don't think, I don't think we can, I don't think we can. I think what Ross told us is we can't approve until we get sign off on the, on the environmental issues. So Bridget can't sign off until the septic is up to standard.
But if she get that done and like I say, when, before the next meeting and it looks like it's okay, is there any way you guys do a meeting in between a meeting? Is that something that you?
What's our next meeting, Jake?
22nd.
22nd.
22nd?
This month, okay, that's, that's probably, that timeframe probably works fine for us.
Okay, well, let's see if you're ready to go, Bridget. Let's see if everything's up to, up to standard.
I'll keep you guys posted.
Yeah, and let's go with that. But we'll have this potentially on the next meeting agenda. All right, very good, thank you, Bridget, thank you. And Ross, thank you for the information. So with that, I would entertain a motion to table this item until our next meeting.
Motion to table this item until the next meeting.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Very good. Next item is Marion County Property 113117 South 3rd Street. We want a discussion. And it says action. Who's leading the charge on this one?
I'll take one, let's start the one. Sorry.
Recently, we, Knoxville had their economic downtown assessment. And we visited with those people, Mark and I had individual meetings with them. And they complimented us very much on our courthouse and what we've done, how the yard looks. Thank you, Chris. But it was brought to our attention about the lot that's at the address and that the county owns and how it has rock on it. And we, different options were thrown out at that time. It's my understanding the city code is, is that it's supposed to be, there'd be, if we're going to use it as a parking lot, it's supposed to be paved. So I started the conversation with Chris on what's other, you know, options for this space? Whether it's green space, whether it's pavement, you know, we have a building on that, what our options were. So Chris and I chatted a little bit. And Chris, could you give us your viewpoint a little bit on, on the land and what your thoughts are?
So, you know, we had a discussion about green space first off. So two discussions, whether or not we build a building there for potential county offices. But I don't think that fits with any of our long-term vision of actually trimming properties down. We're not in the business of adding properties for office space, especially after a courthouse remodel and with the potential remodel of the fourth floor to turn that space into some more viable office space for county staff and things of that nature. So we kind of tabled that and said it wasn't feasible to put a building there. We talked about green space. Green space, I drew up a really nice plan that Keisha took a look at for a nice gazebo and lots of pretty bushes and grass and more things to maintain. So at the end of the day.
There's no hint there.
No, no hint there at all.
Just want to make sure I clarify.
No, just so, yeah, make sure you can see right through that. I think the problem with that space is if you look at the, the building just to the south of that space, it's fairly tall. Where we're located in the hemisphere doesn't lend to a whole lot of sunlight in that space. So anything I'm going to put there that, to grow per se, doesn't hardly get any sunlight. So inevitably, we're still going to be in a situation where I understand the, you know, economic development side of things and the city stand up, stands on things. We're still going to have landscape and rock in there or a giant patio. At the end of the day, I can't really put something in there that's going to grow really efficiently. That isn't going to take a tremendous amount of maintenance. On top of that, it is a natural wind tunnel over there. Everything congregates there if the wind blows out of the northwest. So if you think about fall and leaves, the snowdrifts that we have to plow there every year, it doesn't in my mind lend itself to anything other than a building site potentially for someone. I would say that, that someone should not be the county. The only thing that is very valuable to us is that shed that's on there. You know, we, we keep a lot of our winter equipment up there. There's parking inside of that. It's where we keep one of the custodian lady's maintenance vehicle when they go out and do cabins.
That's what, that's okay.
Yeah, the assessors keep their vehicle in there. It is a very important storage facility for us. So the only thing that I would ask is if we park with that property, we need to make sure that we have something else to take its place. We have land out here, we have the ability, Steve and I have had discussions about that, where we can have something that takes its place. But I don't see how, especially with building material costs, I mean, the gazebo alone because of lumber, I mean, priced at like $22,000 for something that, let's be real, no one's going to use. And I don't mean to sound pessimistic about that, but I can look around at other green spaces in town and people just don't utilize it.
How many people use a current gazebo?
I get one or two requests a year if we're lucky. You know, so I just don't see where we'd take tax money and put it towards a really nice.
There's a snake in here.
Oh, it's a snake in here.
Well, I got it. Well, Chris, we're on the facilities.
A slight disruption that has occurred.
It's right behind you.
What are you doing?
I can get it, I can get it.
It's fine, it's fine, it's all good. He's just a garb snake, this little guy. Keisha, I'm going to use you.
I'm all good for it.
Here he comes, son of a daddy.
Thank you, Steve. I would have.
You don't like hearing those things.
Good job.
Plus, you're everything with snakes. Kelly's leaving, all right.
Well, I thought it was a cord and it was not.
Check your bag, Jake. Did you bring it in with you?
I hate snakes.
They wouldn't do very well coming to my barn.
I'm just, I cleaned the room yesterday, so.
Do you know where the country snakes do come?
I don't know where that came from.
Him was not a happy camper when he showed up in the sun.
So where were we? Let's regroup after that.
That was a memorable moment.
We'll wait for the next wild animal to come to the office.
No, I'm putting my feet.
Here's my thoughts on it. My thoughts on a whole thing, I, you know, I thought the green space idea was a pretty cool idea at first until I really got to digest and everything that was going to take place. My, my personal opinion is I think we should divest ourselves of that property and use, use the money that we would have spent to create a green space or whatever and put it towards a smaller storage space out here. I think the city, I think we should offer to the city some reasonable offer that they, let them use, do what they see fit with that property. Because if we do something, Chris is right, if we do something as a green space, and don't get me wrong, I think it was a good idea, but we'd have perpetual maintenance and the initial cost. I think we could better spend that money out here. That's my opinion.
Is there any way that you could keep the garages and split the lot?
I think get rid of it all.
And I don't know why I'm at that.
If it was me, Keisha, so we'd have to obviously talk to Mrs., you'd have to rezone.
Now, city zoning, but I thought that was a discussion that back in the day, when they tore that building down, that there was no way to split the lot.
Okay.
I want to just divest ourselves of the whole property and utilize it out here. We have the space here with, I mean, we have the footprint. We probably would have to build a building, another building in order to store everything that's up there now and future needs because the building we built out here originally is full. Which, how it got that way, I don't know.
COVID, it's all gone that way.
And that, that brings me to another point.
Well, I was, yeah, I was thinking of the cost.
A lot of, a lot of the stuff out here that's in this building is COVID related. I wonder if we could use some of that money that, in the Recovery Act to help offset some costs.
To build the building.
To our building.
Sure.
Because we're using, because a lot of the stuff to store space now is because of COVID.
Sure. Sure, I wouldn't see why that would be a problem.
I mean, I mean, that would offset our costs. We divest ourselves of anything up there.
Yeah, there's always a chain reaction, right? Yeah, there's always a chain reaction, right? When you move stuff and, and build stuff.
But I think the city could utilize that space better than we're doing.
Right.
Well, what, I mean, is, if there's, I mean, the city, but I mean, what happens if there's business owners or somebody that, I mean, is there, I don't know that Ross is on or not, but, um, I know I had kind of spoke with Ross about this before a little bit. And Ross, are you on by chance? It's okay. You know, would it be something that we maybe need to get a market assessment done, figure out what it is worth?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, e- either way, I mean, I, you know, I know the, meaning the city's strapped for money, but I don't know. I, rather than putting money into I guess I don't know, Keisha, I mean, I, I don't wanna say.
And that's why I thought, you know, let's bring up the discussion, let's talk about it. Um, I, I think Knoxville is-
I think, I think we need to get, we need to get some reimbursement for the building probably, you know, the lot, I don't care. You know, we're gonna help them and, and it'll help us get, having the liability and I mean.
Well, Steve, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. I, I think that we need to divest ourselves of the property. However we do that,
Yeah.
the mechanics to that, we can work out, work that out. Do we, do we offer up the, the bare lot? Do we sell it to this, offer to the city? We do need to get a market price out of it. Keisha, you're, you're right. Cause there's a tendency, especially from municipal, you know, government organization to government organization, everybody thinks we're gonna get a discount, uh, related to that. And I don't think that that's right. Again, for the taxpayer, if we're gonna transfer some of those dollars for a building, we need to make sure we get the market value out of it to do.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I, I don't disagree with that.
So, so I would say, yeah, I'm in agreement with that idea, Steve, and, um, that we set in motion a process to get that done. So if there's agreement from the board, we could make a motion that we want to proceed with a sale of this lot on thirteen, one seventeen, South Third Street and set a process in motion for doing that. But at least, at least an agreement from the board that we want to sell it.
Yeah, are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, I am. I, I, yeah, I just would like to make sure that the taxpayers
Right.
getting a market assessment.
I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I'm I, I tend to move faster sometimes.
I, I like, I, I, I don't like, I don't like lingering over some of these things. I agree with you. So, and Chris is right, the more things we build, our costs go up and we have to maintain. And we shouldn't do that unless we have, the, the value proposition to that has to be so high.
Right.
And this just as a settlement.
I think we, we'd better serve our taxpayer by divesting ourselves of that and, and putting whatever money, or even, even if we don't get into the recovery act money, spending that money out here that, that we can utilize just the space way more efficient and better.
Right. So, uh, any other discussion?
I just appreciate you guys wanting to discuss it.
So Steve, do you wanna make a motion, uh, to initiate a process to sell one thirteen, one seventeen, South Third Street?
Yes, I do. I'm making the motion that we start the process to sell that, this property.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second. So there is a process, like requires public hearing and things of that nature to go?
I just wanna, I just wanna agree that we're all agreeing on selling.
Got it.
We'll do all that in subsequent meetings, Jake.
Okay.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Very good. So Jake, if we could start to map that out.
Yep.
Yep. Very good. Next, item number five, resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four is, uh, a resolution for acceptance of a proposal to purchase eleven million dollars in taxable general obligation capital loan notes. This is the funding for the V A project. And we have Michael Lamoney on line to talk about, uh, the options before us. Two major ones. So Michael, are you on?
Yep, I'm here. Can everyone hear me all right?
I can, I can. Thank you for joining us this morning. So we have a PowerPoint, uh, for that, if we can get that up. Very good. So Michael, you wanna, I'll turn the floor over to you, uh, kinda walk us through what you have.
I just wanna say, I go to about three or four border council meetings every week and have been doing that for a number of years. Never quite saw the snake thing before. I'll get into this and I'm going to be relatively brief. I don't think there's any content here that hasn't been discussed with the board. We had good pricing results, so this is really just summarizing where things finished up. There's not a whole lot of news here, which I think will be helpful. So if we go to the next slide, just an overview that we're issuing general obligation bonds. So it's backed by the county's full faith and credit. Though there's potential other revenue sources that I know the county's working on, uh, with the city for a long-term approach. As you're likely aware, the county, like any taxing authority, is limited to five percent of their actual value. That's about a hundred and forty-one million dollars of potential geo-debt. The county only has about five point seven outstanding, so capacity is not an issue for the county. If you go to the next slide, slide three, I know we've talked about T I F and getting T I F authority here, especially for the, for the parcel. What's clear in this is that T I F is about delayed gratification. So a number of the legal steps that the county has taken over the last couple of months have been to align a situation where the future development of the V A property will benefit the county as a whole as that value comes online and property taxes are paid. So the goal of all of that work was for the county to get the benefit over the long term. I know the board understands that, but I want to be thorough as we're discussing today. Slide four is just talking about the project and future development, which is really getting into more detail about what I just mentioned. So the city currently has the area in a T I F area, but the county has received permission for their own T I F. To be clear, as highlighted at the bottom, only the city or the county can ever have the T I F active at any point. But what this, what the county has done is made sure there is a backstop there to make sure that there is some leverage to collect future revenues to help support repayment of this demolition project that we're financing today. I'm seeing nodding heads. I think this is all on, on par with what's been discussed today. I just thought it was important to set this up. So slide five further goes into this piece and explains that the county is putting the bill here for the initial demolition and site work. The city of Knoxville is expected to be responsible for the initial infrastructure improvements as well as securing the eventual developer or developers to help add valuation to property. So if you just think about it, where we're turning the parcel basically to a developable site, there are infrastructure needs that the city will handle. And then development will go on from there. So sort of a three-phase approach, and I know Mark's highlighted that to date, but, uh, all of this paperwork is kind of culminating in some security for the county to be able to repay this debt here going forward. I'm gonna pause there before getting into details on the actual pricing results. Mark, is there anything there or Jake that I should cover in more detail before really talking brass tax on the pricing today?
No, I think that's good, Michael. I appreciate that.
So let's go to the last couple of slides here. Slide six, uh, it's been a couple of years of similar content that I've prepared. As the board has always challenged me to analyze the worst-case scenarios under various, uh, alternatives that are out there. And that worst-case scenario, whether it's for this Knoxville V A property or the Pella Prairie Ridge development last year, is under the assumption that no development value is ever created. So in that case, the county puts the bill with nothing happening. Now, the county and the board has been diligent in putting those backstops together, getting the ability to have your own T I F, uh, i- as a backstop. Working on an agreement with the city of Knoxville that'll be completed to help ensure that something does happen over time. Again, that delayed gratification of T I F being there for helpful repayment. That being said, I know the three of you on the board have always said, well, what if nothing happens and can we quantify that? And we've done that under a ver- various level of scenarios. Obviously now, not only do we know the cost for the demolition project, we also have the financing for the, for the project. So this is now not a range, but a, here is a worst case. Assuming not only no valuation created at the V A property, but no valuation growth over twenty years within the county. This is particularly conservative, but I know that's what you've challenged me to provide for you today. With that, the potential impact is about twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents per year per a hundred thousand dollars of residential assessed valuation. So about two bucks a month would be the worst-case impact related to the V A property. Now, because of some of our projections, et cetera, we've always quantified the Knoxville V A property and the Pella Prairie Ridge kind of as distinct pieces. Where you'd say, oh, well, should we stack that impact on top of one another? Uh, the answer is in reality, no. The, the way we're showing these worst cases is, is particularly conservative. In all reality, between both the Knoxville V A property and Pella Prairie Ridge, this is actually the total impact between the two. We've just always shown that stat since our initial discussions with Mark and Jake several years ago. So I wanted to be clear on that. This is more favorable than expected for an overall, especially at the dollar amount where the demolition came in. We've run several scenarios. This is within that range, on the low end of the range. I just wanted to be very clear for the board as I thought it was an important item that we've discussed. I see nodding heads, but I'd like to pause there to make sure that all three board members understand that there's no questions here.
Yeah, Steve, Keisha, any questions for Michael on that? We've talked about this a lot over the years. And knowing that this is coming in at the low end of our worst-case scenario range is, uh, is excellent because we know valuation's going to be, uh, increased as a result of these projects. So any questions for Michael on that, on that piece?
Thank you, Michael, for explaining that.
He speaks for the residential assessed valuation.
Say it again.
Yep.
That's not agricultural.
Right, Michael?
Yep. Yep, I've got, uh, I've got a one-page summary sheet of that that I think I've prepared in the past. Steve, you're, you're, you're right, um, that that is limited to that piece. I do have that on a few different commercial property elements. Um, the agricultural property is on a per acre basis and, and is relatively modest. We're talking about cents per month, per acre. Uh, so from a commercial standpoint, I don't know if you've got a specific number you'd like to see or if I can send that summary. I think Jake, I'd sent that along actually yesterday, um, for you to share with the board members. If you want specifics, I'm happy to go into it. But, uh, you know, I've got that prepared for your reference. It's useful, sir.
No, I just wanted to bring, I just wanted to make that point that
Yep.
that, you know, the, the difference between residential and agricultural is, cause it, cause those questions are gonna get asked.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. And I've got that framework there for any questions to be answered and we can run specific scenarios if necessary.
Again, again, this is a worst-case scenario, so that I'm pleased with that.
Yep, yep. Um, the, the last half of the page just goes through some of the, kind of the long-term R O I. I know Mark's talked about this r- repeatedly in board sessions, um, but I thought it was a good summary here. I'm not necessarily gonna read off the page. But I think the point of the county getting involved here was to help accelerate development and have that local municipal control of what happens with the parcel. We talked about the T I F and tax revenues. I think what's really important here with the Knoxville V A property that's different from maybe the Pella Prairie Ridge is the amount of time that the T I F will be outstanding, uh, is going to depend on what develops there and when. There's long-term benefit, but there's also the very long-term benefit of that being developed into productive valuation. That'll benefit the regular tax base of the county for decades to come. So it's just about making that happen bigger sooner is going to help kind of raise all boats in terms of revenue production. And then I think the other part that's important, especially because this isn't some far-flung property, it's, it's within the county seat, city limits, is that the development opportunities there are going to help spur additional investment, people spending money. We're not quantifying some of the other revenue streams for other growth that's there. So again, I think you could poke some real holes in how conservative we're being, but it has been consistent over the last couple of years. And I wanted to read it to, this to you for the last time here today. So slide seven, yep, so slide seven, let's go talk about results on the pricing. I wanna be clear that if you recall, your bond attorneys at Allers and Cooney in discussion on the project for just future flexibility and the right kind of approach here was that these are taxable. So instead of the feder- federally taxed exempt interest that we'd normally see on municipal bonds, these were issued taxable just because of the long-term and potential development nature of the property there. So just to be safe, we're doing that. Coincidentally, you timed things very well from an interest rate standpoint. So the, the actual results on interest rates here for a taxable financing probably looked like what we'd suggest we'd have for a tax-exempt financing in any part of my prior planning for you. So the penalty or, or lack thereof for, for that tax status flexibility was minimal. And what I mean by that is for the financing, the true interest cost, T I C, it's kind of like A P R for the municipal world, was two point five five percent. That's, um, that's particularly strong. Uh, one, rates are low. Two, credit spreads have tightened, so your double eight-three rating was important. Um, I talked a little with Jake yesterday on kind of the inside baseball pieces here. But we, we really made a big marketing push for the county on this transaction and really kept working on that through yesterday afternoon. So despite you issuing eleven million dollars of, of bonds, we had about thirty-five million dollars of orders from investors for the county's bonds. So that means that that true interest cost of two fifty-five, as of noon yesterday, was about two point seven percent. So we were able to scrape about another fifteen basis points, um, in pricing the bonds. That's, that's really excellent demand. Um, and helped us beat some of the projections that we thought were, um, relatively fair, which is good. Uh, this will be a twenty-year term. Uh, it is wrapped around some of the existing debt and the expected repayment from some of the other revenue sources, Prairie Ridge, uh, T I F on a conservative basis and some of the sales tax dollars on your existing jail debt. That overall provides a really smooth net impact, even with no valuation growth either in the property or otherwise. So uh, we think this is a good plan overall. It provides flexibility and allows the county to get the demolition done so that the, the, the ball can be turned over to the city for infrastructure and hopefully development. The rest of the process here is on the last page.
Can I, I can ask a question?
Michael? Michael?
Yep.
Ke- Keisha has a question.
So your first principal payment is six, one, and twenty-five, and then four, so the twenty years, it, it starts current, correct? I wanna make sure that, you know,
Yep.
I understand that. But
Yep.
that's where the twenty years comes in because we're in year twenty-one.
Okay. Yep, absolutely. Good, good point.
Thank you.
Um, you, as you know, you've got a few payments left outstanding on some old debt, and that's the wrapped consideration. We're wrapping around those remaining payments on your other debt. Just to make sure that there is no undue burden on your overall tax rate because of the debt repayment. Just maximizing flexibility. Good question.
Thank you.
Yep. Last page is timing. Today's, uh, uh, resolution will lock in the rates on the financing. You'll have a nice hefty stack of paperwork for your next board meeting on June twenty-second to complete. And then closing doesn't take a meeting. All the funds will be delivered to the county's coffers on July eighth for spend down on the demolition work, um, and some reimbursement of some of your costs to date. So we have that there. Uh, we left that eleven million dollars of sizing in there. For reference, there is a little bit of contingency, but it is just under three percent contingency on the demolition work. Um, I know the county also has some other cash sources that you can choose, hey, do we wanna reimburse upfront or provide later? Uh, that flexibility is there as well because of the taxable status. So, um, overall, pleased with the results here that I've been able to share with you. Um, try to keep this as short as I could, but wanna be thorough. Happy to answer any other questions that you might have at this time.
Very good. Michael, thank you. Steve, Keisha, any additional questions for, for Michael?
No, I haven't. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for explaining all that, taking our questions. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I wanna thank staff for all their time. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's extra on top of everything else, especially over the last year. Um, and it's always fallen up because each time CARES Act or, you know, the A R P dollars or whatever, the attorneys and I are always falling up. So it's one more thing on their plate all the time. So, so for Jake and Michaela and Danny and others and the, the auditors and, and treasurer's office, just wanna thank them for all their time and work on this. It's a lot behind the scenes to me. It's a lot behind the scenes to make your lives easier than it seems.
Yeah. Michael, I want to thank you personally for all your help and guidance during this process, and I know it will continue throughout the course of this, but you've been just an outstanding resource for us as we work through this. The second thing, just to link this to what we we talked about with Kelly, this will not stop our desire to go after additional funding sources if they are available, just like we did with the RIT funding. We are going to continue to pursue other means of funding for this project. But as we've said all along, this this has been on us from the beginning. The federal government has offered zero financial support of the state thus far. As you heard, things were looking really good up till the end. So to the taxpayers of Marion County, we understand what we are asking of you. And this is all of us together to try to help move our county forward, not just a particular city. And there will be other things that will come down the road from an infrastructure standpoint we will have to think about. And where will those where will those funds come from? The idea of just leaving things alone and letting them decay is not an option if we want to compete in the 21st century. So we do understand that. Very good.
Yeah, I would I would hope that everyone would understand the reason the county got involved because the alternatives we were facing were not very receptive or not very good for the county.
No, you pay for it one way or the other, right? That's that's what was going to happen, so better to control our destiny. So if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion on Resolution 2021-54.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-54.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Michael, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep, absolutely. Jake, let's call it 10:11 on the time. Thank you all, folks, and have a good rest of your week.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We'll declare the public hearing open. This is FY '21 Marion County Budget Amendment Number Two. Mr. Grandia.
Okay, so a few meetings back, we did Budget Amendment Number One. Most of that encompassed one of the other projects you guys have been working on for quite some time, Prairie Ridge, along with some expenses for continuing the courthouse project just to get the budget aligned with what the projects were involved. And then Steve Edwards from Conservation also had mostly revenue on that amendment as well as he's working through his year with COVID and his revenues and what he has a building project as well that he's working on. So that was kind of a highlights of Budget Amendment Number One. We generally do generally do, and that was earlier than normal due to those factors and and getting that done and across the board. Don't generally like doing more than one a year, if at all. But that's just kind of the way it works and, you know, just takes flexibility. And I appreciate the departments helping out with that as well. So we also, if needed, do a budget amendment late May into June. So another message went out to departments, does anybody need anything? And again, most departments do not need budget amendments. Steve's is unique because of the project that he's got going on and the carryover of what he's doing for his building. So and then there's a little bit more follow-up on this for the courthouse and VA projects for some of those ongoing expenses just to get Department A9 aligned completely in the year from budgeting standpoint from that before this bond money comes in. So that's a highlight of what this is. This is the the public hearing for this amendment. And I don't know if you have further questions or if Steve's available. I think Steve sent you a message on kind of what he's doing with his building project as well.
He did, he did. I don't know, Steve, are you on? Do you have anything to comment during the public hearing portion?
Yeah, I'm here, Mark. Yeah, I think I tried to explain that being that, you know, this is basically just increased revenue over the year that the department has encountered. You know, it's a great situation to have when you generate considerably more revenue than than you think you're going to. So this is revenue generated above and beyond what I had already included in our 2021 budget for the current year.
Okay, very good, thank you, Steve.
No.
All right. Are there any public comments? This is the public hearing portion of this. Any public comments? Lisa, are you saying?
Sorry, sorry, no.
That's all right, very good, thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of this.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. So we have Resolution 2021-52, which is the adoption of the budget amendment we just discussed. Steve, Keisha, any questions on what Jake presented? No questions, very good. I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
I move to approve Resolution 2021-52.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good, now we have to appropriate what we just authorized.
Correct.
So then we have Resolution 2021-53, which is the appropriation for Budget Amendment Number Two. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2021-53.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Next, we have Resolution 2021-55, which is credit card authorization and credit limit for the HR departments. Lisa?
Yes. Finding a need to have my own credit card with the HR department. Jake has been kind to let us borrow his credit card. Just a simple mailing a box of and the post office requires us to go up, get his credit card, go to the post office, mail it, take the credit card back. So he's been very kind in letting us use that. It just seems that we've had a need a little bit more lately than than not. When we were in courthouse, it was a lot easier. Now that we're out here, it there's background checks that need to be done. It needs to be done on the credit card. But the biggest thing lately has been mailings. We just, we don't have that ability to just go do. So that's why I'm asking for a credit card.
Is the amount just, is the typical amount set by?
I just picked an amount. I'm fine with any amount. We do have some some policy coming through that we'll be looking at probably utilizing the credit card with background checks, that kind of stuff, that's policy that'll come for you later. So I chose five. Originally, I think I chose two, but I'm happy with whatever you decide.
I'm five of five. Yeah.
I know, I know.
And Jake, from a credit management standpoint, we don't.
Right. There is no policy on amounts. Some departments are higher depending on the volume of what they do. And you you have to, sometimes things just have to be done electronically now or of this manner.
Right.
And this resolution, these resolutions, it turns out the first to this. We've had to do this for a few times lately. It's a record for the bank. The bank's files now require the authorization from the board and and the setting of the level. So if that level would need to be increased for any reason or decreased, it would take another resolution that would be brought to the bank for that. And then, in essence, this is the bank saying we're we're behind this.
All right, is there a motion on this resolution?
A question to approve Resolution 2021.
Second.
Jake.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa. Next, we have a discussion, potential action item to eliminate the position of office assistant within the road department. Tyler?
Yep, so as my agenda item suggests, I am proposing eliminating a position of part-time office assistant. We currently have an individual who works four to eight hours per week doing mostly administrative data entry type tasks. As our department has moved to more, to the utilization of more technology, both hardware and software type technologies and then more automated processes and other efficiency gains throughout the department, we're looking, I guess we we don't feel, or I don't feel that there's a need to to maintain this position going forward. We do, we will have some tasks that will have to be absorbed by our office manager, road maintenance supervisor, and our second assistant to the engineer, but those will be fairly minimal. Some of those duties we foresee going away completely in the future due to the technology and automation and advances in softwares and that sort of thing. There may be times when our office manager has to work a little bit of overtime. That's going to be fairly infrequent, such as right now, we're on a couple of cycles of claims and payroll being in the same week. Just depending on the, well, year end, here there's going to be a high volume of claims coming in, which is typical. And we're on a claims and payroll on the same week's schedule at the moment. That's kind of random that it falls on at year end. But that's going to be fairly minimal. Tammy may have to work a little bit extra to accommodate that because at times this position did help with coding claims and and helping her out on those on those weeks. And our second assistant to the engineer could pick some of that up as well if need be.
Board, any questions for Tyler?
No, if you're uncomfortable with it, I guess I'm in favor.
Yeah, it's something we've, I've considered for a while and, you know, there's definitely some things coming down the line that will, I guess, reinforce my point there as far as taking more and more duties away from this position.
Good, right, very good. Thank you, Tyler. Is there a motion to eliminate this position?
Motion to approve the elimination of the position of office assistant.
Second.
Johnner?
Thanks, what's up?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Tyler, thank you. Updates, Mr. McCombs?
No, I'm I'm okay.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the recovery funds. I know that we've all received emails difference and we're still waiting for guidelines from the federal government and what to do with those. And it seems like that's very narrow. I just wanted, I guess, I wanted to maybe open up and chat a little bit about how we thought, maybe this should be a topic for an agenda item in the future, but maybe a special committee to look at that and see what opportunities those recovery funds can be used for. I know that Jake and Michaela have set up, my understanding, a separate account for that. If it, when it does come, do we have any idea, Jake, when that is? No? Okay, all right.
Afforded, if we receive word, afford.
Depends on how fast the printing presses have to go.
Yeah, so.
Jake says no comment.
I know that there's, and and there's quite a bit of hesitancy because we know, we don't know what to do with this because it just seems like the guidelines, it's, they've narrowed it like broadband, when they say sewer, wastewater, maybe COVID in regarding to loss of revenue for COVID. But there's not a lot of direction. But I I guess I was, you know, thinking of that and possibly, you know, I know that I'm not going to have all the answers and that maybe a committee might be the answer, that we could look at that. Whether we form that later or that's something we want to, you know, talk about, so.
What's the committee's purpose?
To look at the items because it it seems like it's a deep, the way way those open up, so like the wastewater and the sewer, looking at that and making sure, you know, is there any opportunity? It, we're kind of a unique animal, I feel, because we are the county and a lot of road infrastructure like sewer and water is done within the cities. But is there opportunity, you know? What about broadband?
Would the committee, what you're looking at, thank Keisha, would need to identify some projects?
Yes, yes.
Because I don't think the committee is going to be able to explain how.
No, but looking at the projects and being able to study it more because obviously, we can't meet without it being a public meeting, and it makes it difficult. And whether we had somebody, you know, within the board of supervisor on that committee, I don't know. So Tyler, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to help answer Steve's question. First of all, I love reading federal regulations and law, but I've done a lot of it the last.
You got somebody, right?
So I'm not the guy, nope. I wasn't on here.
You won the chair.
So Steve, there's like 11 or 13 eligible areas for that funding. One of those is stormwater-related infrastructure. And within that, there's like 13 eligible things. And right now, I have seven county departments that may be just in the, just in the stormwater area. There are seven county departments that may consider a project just related to stormwater infrastructure. So I think that.
How is that related to COVID?
That.
I'm confused.
Well.
Well, I think.
It does explain that a little bit, tying it all back to public health.
And I'll be, go ahead.
Well, no, I, Keisha, I think that's that's a, I actually think it's a great idea. I think once we receive the funds, that will be a time to start thinking about putting together a group on how we would disperse those funds.
Okay.
And I agree, I agree with that concept. I think that that is a good approach considering the ambiguities that are within the federal requirements on this. I've gone through that multiple times, and it's a bunch of vagary, to be quite honest. So one thing that this group could help do is help refine what we would like to spend it on. And are we going to meet the compliance requirements for that money?
Yeah.
Because that's going to be the critical. I don't want a year down the road, some federal entity trying to claw back money because for some politic, and it'll be a political reason that we didn't do it the way that they want it. It'll be totally political, just like the money's totally political.
We also don't want to make ourselves ineligible for any other federal.
Exactly, no, that's exactly right, Tyler. That's that's an excellent point. So so something that this group could do is help us find those bumpers.
No, I don't disagree with Keisha.
Okay. I appreciate it, just, you know, I just had thought of it and I, Tyler and I had kind of discussed, and he did bring up, he's like, whoa. He's like, this is, this is some heavy reading and so.
So maybe once we receive the money, we won't be under any gun to spend it right away. But once that process is completed, then we can set something up from a board standpoint and have that a more robust discussion. Does that sound fair, Keisha?
Yep, sounds great.
Okay, good, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Anything else?
That's it, go ahead.
Okay. I have the only thing I have, obviously, you heard from Kelly, the update on mental health. We are processing from a cross-region standpoint what that means for the cross-region. We will have some dollars that are part of the region that we think will be going into this pool that she described. There's varying opinions on board from different supervisors as to their dissatisfaction with that. We did have some conversations about utilizing those dollars in a different way, potentially even returning those to taxpayers. It doesn't like the legislature even contemplated that within the context of the bill. So that might be a pretty heavy lift to make that argument. We'll have some continuing discussions as across board. We will still be the administrative group that will carry out the law's function until such time as the state does some different things as this new law develops. Second piece, Wednesday tomorrow, I am meeting with our attorney on the 28th Knoxville in the VA. I have some, hopefully, what will be final discussions on that document. And then we'll start the approval process between our two. and then we'll start the approval process between our two entities to get that done. So, that's nearly complete. That's it. With that, I would entertain a motion to close open session.
Motion to close open session.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollums?
Aye.
Very good, we'll take five minutes, thank you.
Oh, yeah, because I.
All right, again.
Yep.
Okay, we are back into open session from our closed session event was the performance review, annual performance review of facilities for Chris Nasty. No further action was taken at this time. With that, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
So, you made the motion?
Yep.
She has to.
I made a motion.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
I have to do that.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.